All right, welcome to the July 8th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for the blessings of this city and this country. Most of all, we just ask you to bless this country, bless everybody, and bless our service providers, but most of all, bless us as we continue to do what's in the best interest of this city. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Wade, I know as we sit up here, we're all a family, but I think you've got a son who did really well in a recent golf tournament, don't you?
Yes. Ben played today in Spring Hill at Kings Creek, and he finished third in the Masters Division. A 13, 15-year-old. I have 20 kids.
Awesome. Good job. Yeah. All right, you have your consent agenda in front of you. Any items that need to be pulled off the agenda? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes of the June 24th, 2021 meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
If there aren't any, I will move for approval.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to old business. We have ordinance 21005 to amend the city code to permit consumption of alcohol on airport property, and this is the second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item 13. This is ordinance 21007 to amend the city code to reflect the UED merger with Streets, and this is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Adams?
Sorry, gentlemen, members of the city council. We did have one small addition to the ordinance.
Okay.
There was no omission of an effective date. We added that, but that's the only change that was made to it. We just wanted you all to be aware of that.
Can I get a motion, Bill, if you'll do that motion as amended, please?
As amended.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll. Thank you, Ken.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to land use matters. On second and final reading, you have ordinance 21015, rezoning property along Ashers Fort Drive.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. On second and final reading, you have ordinance 21016. This is rezoning property along Medical Center Parkway.
So move.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have resolution 21R27. This is a public record request, policy revisions. Ms. Wright?
Most of the revisions are for just housekeeping, to get us in line with what we're doing in practice. The main one is to get my name off and to put in the title of city recorder, and otherwise, this gives you a report of how our requests have come in through the years, and just gives us some flexibility about our form that they have to complete to do one.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I'm gonna do item 17 down at the podium, Ms. Wright.
Does that mean I have to get up?
I'm gonna try to get through this without being emotional. So I'm going to read resolution 21R25 honoring city treasurer, city recorder Melissa Wright for her dedicated service to the city of Murfreesboro. Whereas Melissa B. Wright has served as city treasurer and city recorder for the city of Murfreesboro since 2008, and also holds the position of Finance Director. Prior to her appointment as city officer, Melissa served the city as its chief accountant from 1993 to 2008. Whereas Melissa is a lifelong resident of Murfreesboro, she is married to Don Wright and has two children, Matthew and Amanda, and four grandchildren, Tyler, Tristan, Bryson, and Henry. She is a member of the North Boulevard Church of Christ. Melissa is a 1980 graduate of Middle Tennessee State University with a bachelor of Business Administration degree in accounting and a certified public accountant. She is a member of the American Institute of CPAs, the Tennessee Society of CPAs, the Association of Government Accountants, and the Government Finance Officers Association. She has served as president of the Murfreesboro Exchange Club, is a past treasurer of the Tennessee Government Finance Officers Association, as well as a past board member of the Lineball Public Library Foundation, and is a member of the Blue Raider Athletic Association. Melissa was recognized in a special edition of the Murfreesboro Magazine for Women in Business, and whereas Melissa has worked with the city of Murfreesboro Finance Department, first as a city's independent auditor for 10 years, and then as a city employee for the following 28 years. She was instrumental in many projects related to the growth and development of the city. She diligently managed the city's accounting records and finances, ensuring compliance with federal, state, and city laws. She's provided assistance and guidance to all city employees with regard to the city finances, record-keeping, and a multitude of regulations to which the city must adhere. She supervised and managed a growing staff in the Finance and Tax Department, many who are here tonight, providing professional guidance and personal support to all of those with whom she has worked. She played an instrumental part in the city receiving at least 22 consecutive awards for the city's annual comprehensive report, and nine awards for the distinguished budget presentation from the GFO Association. Melissa serves as the Pension Committee, excuse me, Melissa serves on the Pension Committee, MED Proceeds Committee, and the MED Pension Committee. The city recognizes Melissa in her notable and significant contributions to the city of Murfreesboro and the city finance department. She has handled her times at all with grace, professionalism, and class. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee as follows. The city council of the city of Murfreesboro hereby honors and expresses its profound appreciation to Melissa B. Wright. The people acknowledge her many contributions and devotion to the citizens of the city, serving in two of the five city officer positions appointed by Murfreesboro City Council, and serving the city faithfully for 28 years as both a city officer and city employee. The resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage and adoption, the public welfare and the welfare of the city requiring it. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
We have an amen. And I'll make a motion, we approve that resolution.
Second. Motion is second. Can we please vote on this in acclamation, please? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Melissa, we love you. Melissa has her family here. We're gonna get some pictures, but tell me your mom's name one more time.
Alice Johnson.
Alice. We were joking up there that she said you're 82, and I said that I thought you were 62. So we have Melissa's family that's here. Melissa, you have been a blessing to this city. You've been a blessing not only for the years that you've been doing this, but I think anyone will say, especially coming in on Saturdays and seeing you here on Saturdays, you always have the best in your heart for the citizens of Murfreesboro. We're gonna miss you, but we're so proud that you get to spend some time with your grandkids now, and I know Don especially is gonna be glad to have you at home. So I think we have some pictures. We wanna get a picture of your family, you and your family. Wanna get a picture of your staff that's here, and then with the council.
Let's do this real quick. And.
Melissa, you've seen this before, so right there. All right, everyone moving so fast, we oughta be done, we oughta be done with this meeting by six o'clock.
Don't be sitting.
Yeah.
Where I go, people.
Seven minutes meeting.
Oh, okay. They got seven minutes of talking per meeting.
You realize that with your wife, Tom? You did pretty good.
I did pretty good.
Okay, you guys lay there. This won't count. But we're looking good, all right. Got a couple more, and that's got it. Thank you.
All right. Your team come up, Melissa. And Ms. Michado, I think it would be appropriate you come up and get your picture.
Yes.
That's what you get.
Listen, you get right here, you get right here soon. You guys don't get behind anybody, just.
Georgia looks like, Georgia looks like. She's getting where she left. You know?
No, you stay right there.
Georgia looks good.
You guys spread out, spread out. Don't get behind anybody. Just stay even with it. Come on up, come on up.
I think she's similar to my parents. She got a daughter that grew up with. Oh, come on.
Lay this down, lay this down. Ready? Lay there. Here we go. Got a couple more. That's got it.
All right, Melissa, last but not least, come on up here.
Yo, cow buddy.
Chairs out. Let me just push mine out, probably. There we go, that's good.
Come on in.
Line them up, Bill. Spread out a little bit, spread out just a little bit.
Spread out.
You're in the center.
Spread out a little bit, he says.
Spread out.
Hands down to your side.
Now, look at him.
Hands down. Bell struck.
He said hand down to you.
Button your coats.
You don't even tip them, it's a curtain.
It'll take several. Let's see if we're getting here. Got a couple more. Now I'm gonna take the flash, the flash off. Lay right there. That's got it, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Very good. Good stuff. Yeah, no kidding.
Smile so long, I need some Vaseline for my teeth.
You know, I just heard that.
Come back in my pageant days.
Melissa, we're so proud of you, and for all of our city employees, I think we have a celebration Tuesday at 1:00. It's gonna be in the rotunda for you. So we're, that'll be your final day with the city, correct?
Correct.
All right.
It's been my honor.
No, it's been our honor.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to land use matters. We have a sewer allocation variance for Memorial Boulevard for Slim Chickens.
Mayor, council, stand before you requesting a sewer allocation variance for the development of a proposed Slim Chickens restaurant along the west side of Memorial Boulevard, south of Kings Ridge Drive. Water Resources has vetted and approved this opportunity. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. McKnight?
Second.
Who was the motion?
Kurt.
Kurt.
Kurt, all right. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have a sewer allocation variance on Memorial Boulevard for Whataburger.
Mayor, council, stand before you requesting a sewer allocation variance for the redevelopment of a lot along the south side of Old Fort Parkway that previously housed Old Chicago Pizza. Water Resources has already vetted and approved this request. Stand for any questions.
All right.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we now have public hearings that we need to schedule for annexations. Mr. Blomley?
Yes, sir. Mayor McFarland, we would recommend August the 19th for both of these public hearings.
Can we get a motion for August 19th for public hearings?
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. All right, we have Northville Elementary entrance sidewalk demo replacement, and this is a construction contract replacement.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Kayla Walker, and I'm representing staff to ask for approval of the Northville Elementary sidewalk entrance replacement. The school was built in 1986, and since the school's exposed aggregate entrance has deteriorated over time and requires repair. The scope of this contract includes the removal of the failing exposed aggregate and replacing with a fresh finished concrete. It also incorporates removing precast benches and replacing them with steel benches, replacing floor trees, and installing in-ground lighting. Staff requested bids, and three were received on June 8th. The lowest qualified bidder in the amount of $157,000 was submitted by Rice Construction. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Much needed, and I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to engineering task order for waste-to-energy pro forma. Mr. Gore.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. We were at such a great pace, I hate that I'm going to slow it down a little bit here, but got a few slides to go through. I'd like to explain some of these next three items in some detail. Hopefully, I didn't go into too much detail. What we're asking for you tonight is to, for a task order to determine the economic viability of a waste of fuel or waste of energy project. Have Mr. Mike Webb here with me with Waste Away, and as the slide up there says, "The beginning of the end for landfills and deployment of a much-needed renewable and sustainable energy source." How? Waste away plants bring in raw garbage or single-stream recyclables and send out a clean, high-value, solid fuel. For industry and power generators, this is all accomplished in less than 30 minutes, beneficially utilizing up to 90% of the solid waste that they process. So that's only 10% that has to go to the landfill. So no odors or noise, all MSWs handled indoors, quickly processed. They are located in Morrison, Tennessee. So this is just a real quick illustration of what comes in, the 100% raw, unsorted MSW, municipal solid waste. It's ground, shredded, separated, and sorted, and then a 70% clean fuel. Metals are taken out for recycling. This, I'm not gonna go through all the testing, they've gone through extensive testing. 2017, they did have a 430-megawatt test burn. So just to use the term RDF, refuse-derived fuel, this is effectively a coal equivalent. In 2019, I think this was somewhat of a game changer. Mike can affirm that or not, but they got a comfort letter from EPA that basically says that this is a non-waste fuel, it's non-hazardous secondary material, so it doesn't fall under the federal guidelines for waste incineration. It replaces coal or wood, and so it's a non-waste fuel appropriate for use in units designed to combust coal or wood and biomass. It's low contaminants, so it's basically comparable to or lower than those contaminants found in coal or wood and biomass. So what we have before you is a conceptual phase, it's $55,000. It's in conjunction with Griggs and Maloney, who we've done a lot of environmental engineering consulting with. So it's really to come in and determine at what point does waste of fuel or waste of energy make sense. So these are part of the tasks or the deliverables. They're gonna determine Middle Tennessee Electric and TVA requirements for electrical sales, if there is an opportunity to wheel power outside the fence, and sell that back to TVA. Identify fuel buyers, this is kind of a big deal. We need to figure out if there are people who need this fuel or will use this fuel as a coal equivalent. Optimizing the project for our current and future needs to right-size it, and again, to demonstrate positive economic viability. At what point, in my mind, does this overtake the necessity to keep landfilling and hauling garbage and paying for tipping fees if Middle Point landfill closes? So I'm gonna do a little, I geeked out a little bit, so I'm gonna go ahead and apologize, but if you look at the left Y-axis mileage to landfill, and I've got on the X-axis disposal cost dollar per ton, if you see, I put a little graph up here that says, at a $40 per ton tipping fee, all the way up to a $70 tipping fee at two and a half miles, this is kind of the range, you know, it would be between $70 to $110 per ton. If you go to $4 per mile at those same tipping fees, you can kind of see, it shifts the window a little bit. So the point of this is to really, and I just made this lineup, this is just Daring Gore kind of sketching, the point of this project is to find buyers and the market rate for this refuse-derived fuel, and it's also to find out where does it fall in comparison to the landfilling, hauling, and tipping fees that we will eventually get to. That's it. So we have this as a backdrop to know when, it may be feasible now, it may be very competitive, it may compete with, if Middle Point closes in five years, and we have to haul garbage to Camden, Tennessee, a 225-mile trip, if those tipping fees get very high, or the hauling distance, I mean, the hauling cost gets high, then it may very well that waste of energy or waste of fuel makes sense. But I think this study's important to have, just so we know where we're at. When do we stop hauling? When do we, at what point is a tipping fee too high, and at what point is landfill too far away? So that's kind of what we're asking for, for this $55,000 economic viability study, and I'm here to answer any questions, or Mr. Webb can as well.
I got a question, Mr. Gore.
Yes, sir.
Just trying to, and this is, you have heard me ask this question about other things, I just kind of wanna, this will be consistent, I believe. I mean, $55,000 seems like a lot of money to tell us that we wanna maybe do some engineering. Why is it $55,000 to just get to a point to know kind of what this, I mean?
It's really, the biggest component is finding buyers, finding the end-use. As Waste Way's told us several times, they get into a chicken-and-egg kind of situation where, when they go talk to people about, you know, using this as an alternate fuel source, they immediately ask, well, who's gonna be, where are you gonna, who's the supplier? Right, where are you gonna get it from? Who's committed to give you this? And they don't have a response, so they don't ever get any real commitment from the end-user. And the same thing with us. We come in and say, hey, this may be interesting, but what can you sell it for, and who are you gonna sell it to? And they're like, well, we don't have that, and it's gonna cost us, it's gonna cost some money to go find that out and to do the legwork. So to me, that's really, we're trying to find out if people can use it, what will they pay for it, and how will it stack up compared to some of these other costs, so.
It's a really baseline.
It's a baseline pro forma.
How often do these users change? So if we don't do this now, and it's eight years, 10 years down the road, are we gonna have to do the same study again to figure out where those users are?
I would love to say no, but maybe. If, I mean, like any report or any pro forma, if it sits, and I hate to say, gathers dust, I know as a, when I was a consultant designing a road, I can't, it's Pitts Lane, it's the Pitts Lane between Northfield and Dejarnet, but the other Pitts Lane between Northfield and Tennessee. We had that thing ready to go back in probably 2000, and, you know, if you let it sit for five or six years, that road design, you gotta pick it up, and things have changed, and you gotta basically dust it off and redo it. So I can't commit to you that if we sit on this for several years, that we wouldn't have to dust it off.
I think what's important, you know, as we had the discussion over the last couple of weeks, even with us approving to buy a transfer station, and, you know, the discussion we've had about what it costs the taxpayer for our garbage trucks to sit in line at the landfill for two and a half, you know, two hours, I think it's important, the part that sparks my interest is the discussion with Middle Tennessee Electric and TVA alone to find out the viability of what the power outside the lines could be, or the fence, as you said, could be. So I think with everything that's going on right now, it's very applicable to be able to talk about maybe what is next for Murfreesboro.
I'm, you know, I'm a fan of it, and I think we gotta get out in front of this. I mean, you know, we can't, I don't think, you know, from a standpoint, maybe we have to pick this up six or eight years from now. I get that, but I mean, and I'm also understanding that we gotta get in front of this deal and be prepared.
Right.
Even know if it's a viable option.
Right.
You know, I don't think, if I think we find out it's not a viable option, we probably won't have to pick it back up six or eight years, and we can be going down a different road, right?
Well, we've talked with Mike, I mean, if the landfill does get approved for expansion, if we don't stop that expansion and continue and get pretty good deal on tipping fees, free or greatly diminished tipping fees maybe at some point, it's gonna be hard to justify, you know, moving forward to the next phase of this design. So a lot of things in limbo, but I think it's good to get the pro forma baseline, I think is, it's important for me as an engineer just to know, again, when are we gonna, if we do close the landfill, how far is too far, or how high tipping fee is too high, when this actually comes back to make economic sense.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an objection either. I know it's a lot of money, and I, but I think it's well-spent dollars. I do have a question. So it seems more like, and it's probably because I don't understand, so let me clarify that first. It seems more like sort of a partnership in this proposal in the sense that we're finding an end-user for the process rather than Waste Away having an end-user for the end-product.
Well, I think there's a lot of ways to do it, right? I think that, just based on our discussions, they have a venture capitalist group of investors that would, could come in and do it kind of more as a privatized type situation. Or we, as a city, could come in and, and, and fund it ourselves and effectively run it. So, yeah, the, the, you know, how do we, how do we get charged a tipping fee? We would have to pay for something to bring the supply in. The people using it as a product would have to pay. And that's kind of the, the supply and the end-product. We got to figure out what, what, how much did the facility cost? And you got to capitalize that. So it's just going to be a big, it's a financial model.
But, but to clarify, they don't have an end-user for the product today, which is what this is for.
Correct.
It's helping find the end-user. So we're helping
Yes.
Find an end-user for that process.
And I think it's important, as Councilman Martin said, you know, going all the way back to 2016 when we started talking about what's next after the landfill closing. In the council, I guess it was in 17 or 18, implemented our solid waste fee at $5, and then that's gone to $7.50. That whole goal was to find out what's next. You know, what are our next steps that we're going to do for the community? And this is really part of that next step. I think even as a solid waste fee, $55,000 is a lot of money, but it also could end up saving the resident money moving forward as opposed to that, that dollar figure of $31 to $32 per month as opposed to the $7.50 we're paying right now.
The, the, the concern I've always had with my pro forma when I put those, those monthly fees together is it's reliant on another landfill.
Right.
Reliant on another landfill that if Middle Point closes, Camden's probably going to see, as I stated in my memo, it's probably going to see, it's going to accelerate its closure date because more people will take it to Camden. And then their tipping fees will go up. And then when they close, then you got to find somewhere else to take it. So it's not a very sustainable solution to continue to landfill and, and go farther and farther away to find more landfills. I think the Tennessee Solid Waste Plan says the, that we're running out, the state will run out of landfill capacity currently permitted in 2035. So this just really puts a more of a control on, on our, on our side.
Let me ask a question, and I, because I don't know the process, and I'd love to see how this works. What about using landfill product to generate what you're talking about? Can you use not just solid waste, is it, you know, that's currently being used? The one thing we do know, we know how much solid waste we're generating.
Right.
We know that. But if this becomes something that's economically viable, why aren't they digging out landfills and using what's in landfills?
Because landfills are still, I mean, there's still capacity and, and the price point just hadn't gotten high enough for, for us, for people to take landfills off of the table and go to this, this other alternate process. So that's where I'm concerned as a state. We see how much emotion goes into trying to just expand an existing landfill. And to get a new landfill, it's very difficult to get it permitted these days. So that, that's part of this study is when, when's that? I just see that, that crossover point happening sooner rather than later, where it will be economically viable. Now, going out and mining an old landfill out, I don't know if we're there, if that, that may not be. I'm not sure if that's, I haven't, we haven't even talked about that. I don't know if that's something to be just explored or not.
But after meeting with these, with Waste Away and listening to what you have presented us, this process doesn't smell though, right?
No.
Okay.
Now, we, I meant to bring some of the, I went to bring some of the fuel, but it, it really is, it goes, almost goes through an autoclave-type process where it gets sterilized and, and there's no, there's no microbiological activity. The other thing that's kind of an offset cost is this is single string. So it, it takes all of the recyclable stuff that we've talked about, maybe having to go do a curbside recycling program. They want all that wood product, plastic, and different things in there to raise that BTU value. And it, it offsets or defers any need to go do a curbside recycling process.
What about Darren, the bio-solid piece? I know the dryers after this, can they be a part of that? And it still be a fuel, or is that still a separate?
You know, we could use this as a fuel to fire a boiler to dry our bio-solids. But I don't think our bio, our bio-solids are 85% water.
Yeah.
I just think that would.
Separate streams.
Yeah, I think it'd have to be separate streams. That's just my instinct. I don't, haven't confirmed that, but I'm pretty sure.
Any more questions?
There are none, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right. Darren, we'll now talk about full-scale bio-solids thermal dryer conceptual design.
Yes. It's all interlinked. The world is round. Okay, so here's a lovely picture of our bio-solids that comes out of our rotary presses. It's, like I said, it's currently being landfilled, free of charge. It's 85% water. There are several ways to create Class A bio-solids. You can dry it with a gas-fired dryer. You can, there's a thing called an autothermal thermophilic aerobic digestion. And then there's lime treatment. And you ultimately, you get something with less than 5% water. It's fully beneficial for reuse on agricultural crops or turf as a soil amendment. So that's where we're, we're trying to get to. It, and it's qualified, right? It's all qualified on what happens with the landfill. So we did do a lime pasteurization pilot in 2017. Seems a lot longer than that. We did do a bio-solids master plan in that same year in December. We installed a small-scale natural gas-fed dryer in November 2019. In March of 2021, it worked, but it didn't meet the performance spec. So it was more expensive to dry the bio-solids than we had, they had guaranteed. So we're getting our money back for that dryer. What I'm here today is to ask for this full-scale dryer valuation task order. And again, a lot of that is contingent on the Part II application of Middle Point being submitted in February 2022. I just put that in there because, again, drying bio-solids is an expensive endeavor. And creating Class A bio-solids is expensive. And if we don't have a landfill to take it to, then it makes, it makes economic sense. If we continue to have a landfill that charges us nothing to dump them there, then drying bio-solids does not make, it's not a very good business decision. So this is a little bit of a busy graph. I'm just pointing out, we've done a lime pasteurization pilot. We've done a belt dryer pilot. Both of those, the lime pasteurization, the product was unusable. It was just not, the agricultural community could not use it in its form. So it was going to take a second process to get it usable. The belt dryer, again, is that 30.1 million is, is, is low. So what this study is trying to do is we're going to come back and look at paddle dryers, belt dryers, and rotary drum dryers. We're asking for approval to do that. So it's five different equipment manufacturers. We've had Zoom meetings with all of these folks. We're going to go out and, and find a wastewater plant or a water resource recovery facility that has undigested bio-solids that are taken to that 85% or 15% solids, exactly kind of like what we do. We got to go find those plants, find their dryers, get the performance metrics from those plants. And we're just going to do a much more detailed cost evaluation to figure out what, what would it look like. So it's going to be dryer capacity, capital cost, O&amp;M cost. It's almost the same kind of pro forma we're talking about with doing with Waste Away. This is a little more expensive, but it's, the study and report is 170,000, site visits 9,500. And one of the big things, the 67,000 to me is getting these dryers, seeing which one would fit in our current bio-solids facility. If we have to build another building, that's going to be a strong case to not choose or select that dryer. This is a lot of money. And again, this is, but this is an $18 million capital investment. And I don't want it to be wrong. We studied it for four years, four and a half years. And I'm asking, again, to continue to study it because I want to make dang sure, whatever we come up with, it's going to be the highest benefit, least-cost solution. So I'm available for questions if you have any. We do have this budgeted in our reserve.
I know we do have it budgeted, but there also has been several bills come through the legislature, that we may not have an option, that we have to do this, correct?
That's true. That's true. Bio-solids are not, they're, they're a high-value target for the landfill operators to point to, that claim that that's odor, the odor is being caused by the bio-solids. And I just found out recently that they, in 2011, they were the cause for all the underground fires out at Middle Point. At least that was their claim anyway. So it is, it's, it's a, it's a real easy thing to throw, to, 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 to point to as being the problem. And so the legislature does tend to try to restrict putting the bio-solids into, I know Metro, Davidson, Metro County, they're, they're drying all their bio-solids right now. They used to take them to Middle Point. They don't do that anymore.
Yep. My point is, we may not have an option to not do something years.
We can afford to do it if we need to do it. And it, and it's kind of the, I always tell people, there's a sustainability, affordability, scale. And sometimes the sustainable solution is expensive, but you're right, we may have to do it.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move to City Works Asset Management System, EMS Software Licensing. Ms. Gore.
Mayor, thank you again. I put in front of you the Water Resource Information Technology Systems Integration flowchart. I totally, I totally plagiarized this from a consultant and just changed it up a little bit. I'm just kidding. So these items, one through six, we have done, you know, the credit card payments. We, we did our customer information system. We got our interactive voice response, mobile workforce management. Moved in, or the MUNIS system with City Hall migrated to that. Kind of the last, the third leg of this three-legged stool is a CMMS. It's Computerized Maintenance Management System. Effectively, it's an asset management system. So what is and why deal with asset management? This is a systematic process of developing, operating, maintaining, upgrading, and disposing of assets in the most cost-effective manner. So this is just a little geeky curve I found that you don't want to spend too much on preventive maintenance. You don't want to put, spend too much on corrective maintenance. You want to find that optimum point of predictive maintenance where you're just putting the right amount. That gives you the, the longest life cycle for that asset at the least cost, right? So that's where we're trying to get. This is, this is saving money. So what is, the vendor that we're using, it's City Works. We're, we're basically leveraging the, this is what's doing our permits, land and licensing. They've also got a module of AMS Asset Management System. So the data mobility, work orders get digitized now and, and they get plugged into our GIS. We've got such a strong geographic information system with the ESRI product. This starts to compile all the service and work orders into that GIS-centric enterprise platform. And then ultimately, you can see where those assets are failing or where you can start seeing the trends. What are we having to work on repeatedly? When is it time to replace something? What's the consequence of failure? What's the probability of failure? The consequence, or the likelihood of failure? So it really just kind of puts a brain, right now, I know at Water Resources, we're doing a lot of things on paper. We've got a lot of siloed databases, a lot of siloed spreadsheets. I think Streets has that, a lot of folks. This is just going to pull everything together into kind of that GIS engine. There's currently a street department configuration that's ongoing right now. You can kind of see what it does. Like this is a particular situation where it assigns a service order. It's, this is a backup and a channel dealing with stormwater. It will also look at, you know, if you have street paving requests, a street light out, debris pickup, a backup in a culvert, if there's flooding or damaged storm drain. This is the kind of, it's going to just track. So every department that deal, that has assets will ultimately be able to use this. So City Street currently has 10 seats. The ask today is to go to an unlimited seat licensure, that's 54,000. Big part, part of why I'm jumping to this and asking for the unlimited seats right now is that we are, we have 76 seats required as part of Facility Dude. It's a current, it's our facilities asset management. This AMS would take the place of that. So we would, we would phase out the Facility Dude and start taking all of our vertical asset management into the AMS. True North Geographic Technologies is currently meeting with 29, we're having 29 survey, or pre-meeting surveys with Fire, IT, Airport Engineering, Transportation, Solid Waste, and Water Resources to, to determine what it's going to cost to fully implement this. So this 54,000 is just getting the unlimited seats of the software. We will be coming back later to give you the full implementation cost of what it would take to do this citywide. And again, try to give you the, define the benefits to that. We've had, Water Resources has had funding for this in our CIP, our Working Reserve CIP Capital Improvement Plan for, gosh, six years. We've just never pulled the trigger. So what we would like to do is, is just go ahead and appropriate those funds that we've had earmarked to, to purchase the software and come back with you for the implementation cost. And then, once we kind of get to the final, you know, when you approve, if you approve the implementation, and we do a pro-rata share where the city's general fund would come back and, and reimburse the enterprise fund for their, for their share of the cost. We've usually done that in reverse, like with the timekeeping system and the financial system. Usually the city would front-end fund, and then Water Resources would kind of come in and give our pro-rata share. We're just kind of flipping that because we've got the money that's been earmarked for this. So I, I know that's quick. This is probably more, more of a, should have been maybe a workshop item, but we really need to get these unlimited seats because Facility Dude is kind of migrating away. And we need our, we need our facilities maintenance folks to continue to be able to create their service orders. So available for questions.
Is this an annual licensing fee?
It will be. It will be. And I, so when we come back with the full implementation cost, I'll be able to show you the full, probably the five-year. What we typically do is we get a five-year guaranteed maintenance cost and then the one-time implementation cost. So when we get this discovery document completed to really know what we're doing and how much it's going to take to get it, to get it implemented enterprise-wide, I'll come back with the full cost and, and share it with you.
I move for approval if there's no other questions.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
All right, you have a couple of board and commission appointments. You have some reappointments to the Greenway Projects Committee. You also have some reappointments to the Board of Electrical Examiners and the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeal reappointments. These are all from administration.
We vote all of them at the same?
I think we can vote on all of them at the same time. Is that okay with you, Ms. Wright?
Second.
Adam, I'm asking Ms. Wright. It's her last night.
She looked at me.
Okay. All right. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade. Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And I didn't read on your motion, would that include the appointment to the M.D. Pension Committee for Charlie Rigsby? I just want to make sure for the record that included that.
We have a beer tonight, too.
We're going to have a beer after this tonight.
We, we missed it, so I just didn't want to skip it. We have a new location at 1810 Old Fort Parkway, Suite D. They have met the background requirements. They do need to finish up their building codes inspections to improve it.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Before we go to the update on Community Investment Citizens Advisory, Kayla, you want to give us an update on the Sportscom remodel, forestry remodel project?
Hi again. So the good news is we just finished the floors yesterday, and we are going to let them cure until Tuesday. And we are projecting completion for July 20. Other news is the original estimated cost was about 250,000. Once we got in there, we realized how much labor. I mean, everything was pretty much done by hand. So now we're projecting the cost to be about 350. So pretty, pretty big jump. But I feel like all of us have been going by almost every day. And we really want to kind of commend Rice Construction with how hard they worked on all of this because it's just been a lot of labor.
Any other good news?
We'll be done July 20.
Thank you, Kayla. All right, we have, thank you very much. Thanks for your hard work on that.
Sure. Ms. Skels Harris.
Just a question. On those 18 employees, we decided to give them that one-time increase, did we not?
Which, which one?
The 18, you know, people that we discussed in the workshop, that we're not getting anything? Remember, we discussed that in the workshop, those 18 people that were not?
I don't think that was.
Talking about the police officers.
And there's three other employees.
The topped out, the topped out and whatever, the, the?
They're above.
Range and topped out?
Above range.
I don't know.
No, the 18.
Yeah, there's 18 employees above range. I think with the increases for this year, they become in-range. So next year, if we do have an increase next year, that they would participate in that.
I don't think we approved that.
Oh, I thought we talked about giving them that one-time pay.
Are we talking about the stipend?
The stipend?
Yes.
The stipend.
Yeah, if they qualify for the stipend, yes, the stipend would be.
Yeah, they would have gotten.
That's separate.
Okay.
Yeah, they would receive that.
Yeah, that question was asked of me. I just wanted.
Oh, yes. Yeah, the stipend they would receive.
Thank you.
All right, we now have the update on the Community Investment Citizens Advisory Committee from Councilmember LaLance.
Yep, so just want to give everybody an update on this, kind of last couple of meetings. We've had, I think, a couple of meetings since our last time that I got you guys updated. So I'll kind of skip across that, even though we did sort of follow up on one of those topics. And I'll back up on that a little bit.[1789.58] But a couple of things that I wanted to kind of go through, to sort of get us to a point of making kind of a where do we go from here, you know, is, we, we did make a few, there were some things that I think the committee was pretty, was pretty unanimous or at least a high majority on, or some things in, that we discussed. One was about making the investment policy for the fund. If they're, you know, whatever that fund is, that we kind of, the committee felt like that was something that should be a local decision as far as the investment policy. I'll just tell you guys kind of frankly, I think that's going to be really similar to like our pension or something like that and, you know, that'll be something that I think should be done locally to determine kind of how much risk and that sort of thing. We, we also discussed kind of how to, how should we pursue an investment consultant? You know, someone, a group that is going to sort of go out and, and interview and figure out, all right, well, who's going to be the small cap manager? Who's going to be the large cap manager? Those kinds of things. The group was, I think, very consistent to say that that should probably be not local. We, we are using some other foundation-type organizations in the, in this area that also kind of have learned from maybe past experience that, that maybe that's a better way to do that. There were no restrictions, so if that, if that consultant finds someone in Nashville or somewhere around that is the best at what they do, they can choose that. They can point us in that direction. But that the quarterback, you know, what I kind of called the quarterback, that consultant, should be kind of a, an outside group that, that really is not going to have ties to locally here, okay? We, a couple of the other things that we kind of, that I think we came to a consensus on was that, that I think everybody felt like to some degree that we would be able to use some of the income that is generated from the distribution from this fund would be to kind of supplant the, you know, what our normal strategic partnership budget looks like. You know, that that could be kind of handled outside of our normal operating budget and kind of a, that would, that would execute a little bit of a change in the way that we've done that in the past where, you know, that's always something we've handled very hands-on where now that would be kind of go, go outside to a, to a fund like this that would kind of, that would be able to fund that, potentially fund at a little higher rate, right? So that was something that we also was very, very consistent across the committee. The last but not least, I, I'm going to, I'm going to summarize this maybe over, in an oversimplified way, but I think it really is holds true and maybe I can just look at Adam and Craig really, but Adam especially, to just say, you know, we had the couple of attorneys come in that are specialists in foundations, trusts, you know, these, these types of endowments, that sort of thing. And the way that I'm going to summarize this is it sounded to me like after an hour-long discussion or so about this, that it sounds like we're going to probably be able to achieve about anything that we've talked about trying to achieve so far, you know? I mean, it's now, it may end up being a, a trust, it may end up being a foundation, it may be end up being a combination of the two things. You know, there was different, different mechanisms to, to get there, to achieve those things. But in an oversimplified way, I would say it sounded to me like, yeah, we can, about everything that I've heard us talk about in the past is going to be achievable. And Mr. Martin has been at most, you may have missed, did you miss that one or?
No, I was there too.
Yeah, so I mean, and you can, I mean, if you have stuff to add to this, I mean, one of the points that I was trying to get at today is kind of get you guys just updated on this. I feel like that, you know, we might be at a point and to kind of, we're at a, a little bit of a fork in the road with, with that group to, you know, because I, I'm trying to balance. We don't want to, you know, we don't want to be up there, I don't want to be wasting the committee's time and I've said this to them, talking about things that aren't going to be on our radar and aren't going to be, you know, something that we're just wasting time because it's going to get back to us and then we're going to maybe go 180. So I feel like we're at a spot where we kind of, there's some decision points and things that we'll need to come to, you know, on our end before we go back into any committee setting, you know, if, if, if it's even necessary. So it kind of, that's why I want to make sure, give us an update. See if you guys had any specific questions that, that I could answer from where we are. It's kind of, as I was thinking about this earlier today, it was kind of funny. I started thinking, all right, I'm going to try to get, give you guys an update on where we are and try to make sure I've answered questions to the council. I was like, man, this city manager's job is tough. I don't know what they want me to say. Anyway, I did want to give you guys a chance. If you have questions, you know, as far as what we've learned, you know, let me know.
The only thing that pops out to me is that, you know, we, we are, I'm not, I don't want us to rush. This is a huge decision to make. I think we all trusted Rick and that's why we asked you to chair, you know, this, this committee. We're going to be in a point sometime around October that we need, we've got to get something to the legislature to be able to vote on something. So the only thing I thought, as I saw this on the agenda, I would wait, make the recommendation that you've done so much work on it, that as a starting point, maybe come back to us with a synopsis and maybe a discussion point of at least, hey, this is a direction that this council needs to discuss to head on, head in. The commission, the committee can't really make a decision on how we spend it and that's really where we are as a council now. So, I mean, my recommendation, if, if the council's okay, is let, let Councilman LaLance come back with sort of a framework and less, as a council, discuss what the next steps are going to be. If y'all are okay with that.
Yeah, I'll comment too. Rick's done a really good job. That's not an easy topic of conversation because that's a very complicated set of discussion points to talk through and I think he's done a good job moderating the group. But a couple of things that stick out that I do think you need some help and guidance with from the standpoint of balancing this with the committee, the, the council's vision and the committee's vision, if you will. One, talking about the outside agency discussion, you know, the library's a big part of that and so, you know, we probably need to be on the same page about what we do about that to help you. I think we also need to be in a good frame of mind of, over and above, what we have been doing from an outside agency standpoint, what our bandwidth and tolerance level, you know, from a council standpoint would be. I think that would be good. And then thirdly, probably the discussion of how much of that income goes to, into the operating budget to offset what we lost, because I know there's been a lot of discussion on that. So just to try to kind of help you guide the committee related to what the council's expectations are versus what I think the committee is thinking. Because, you know, I heard all the comments that were made and I, I think it has been a really daunting task to try to balance that, lead the group and represent the council. And, you know, my compliments to you doing a good job.
Well, thanks and I, and it is, the, the balance that I've tried, that it has been probably most difficult for me is again, kind of this idea of I don't want to waste their time by getting too in-depth into that conversation that is really just going to end up maybe going in a totally different direction once it gets back to us, yet getting into the conversation with that committee in order to get some good feedback, you know? So I, I feel like we've done a, we've, we've had a, you know, because that's actually the conversation I was talking about, we did circle back on that. You know, I kind of talked to you guys at the workshop out there that day and kind of told you that there'd already been some really wide-ranging ideas from a five-person group on, on that kind of thing. And I think we've narrowed that, I think that got narrowed at that next meeting because Angela came and spoke about strategic partnerships and kind of cleared up a little bit of, you know, how we vet those and how we've kind of made sure those are connected to what the city's vision is and some things like that. So it felt like that got a little bit narrowed at, at the very, I'd say at the very least. But look, at the end of the day, here's, I almost think I got to the point where there was still such a wide range on that, that I think the answer is there's a wide range on it. And now it's our, just now our turn to kind of say, okay, we got to now get to that and get it focused down to whatever it is we want to get to. I, that's kind of how I read it at least.
And I'll make this additional comment. There was a specific discussion point in there where, and depending upon how you look at the math, you know, you're talking about how much you come in, how much you distribute, what it earns, all that sort of stuff. But, you know, let's say there's 10, 12, 13 million dollars that's kicking off this at some point in the future, you know, whether that's five years out in the future or 15 years in the future. There were some discussion point of how do you measure what we were getting from the pilot? How do you index that somewhat from an inflationary standpoint to look into the future? And then what do you do with the rest of the money? Meaning, all you do is replace the pilot plus some indexed, you know, inflationary number. To help you, just from my perspective and listening, I, I don't think in my perspective, I would look at this as the majority of the money would be used over and above the pilot plus the index, whatever you decide on, for some other source. Because I know that was a big topic of discussion. So I, I would lean in the category of that, the majority being to fund the city, to offset, to ease the burden of the general fund, you know, that's where I would be.
Yeah.
But that does not mean that I would not be in favor of something increased for outside agencies.
Right.
I'm just going to lean on the other side.
Well, yeah.
I say that to help you in that conversation from my perspective.
So to, to clear up a little bit, since he was there, I kind of tell you, you know, I think I may have mentioned this in our, in our first update, but kind of, you know, some of the, when we're talking about whatever that number is, it's being kicked off. You know, it's from the, from the corpus of the, of the trust or foundation or wherever it turns out to be. You know, there were kind of discussions that went from all the way from, hey, the city only gets back a little bit, you know, whatever it was getting from the, from the pilot at the electric department, everything else should just be given away? All right, all the way to, you know, the discussion, again, I'm just saying the discussion ranged from that all the way to, well, no, it just should go all to the city. You know? And so I think what he's kind of saying is maybe not the, the idea of only, and now look, this was even, the discussion was even brought up that, okay, so for example, the 3.2 million dollars, we'll call it in the pilot number recently. There was discussion to say, well, okay, well, if the new Milton City Electric Organization is paying 3 million in taxes pretty soon, that all the city's ever going to get from this foundation is $200,000.
Right.
All right, so, you know, that, there, it's that side of the coin, okay? That, I, I don't, I'm trying not to say extreme, but I mean, you know, it's to that end of the spectrum, is probably a better word, to the other end of the spectrum, which is, no, all of it just goes straight to the general fund. You know, and I guess if you went beyond that spectrum, which we've all already said we don't want to do, is spend all the whole corpus tomorrow, right? I mean, so, but within the spectrum of we're going to protect the corpus, but how are we going to spend the distribution money? It's been a pretty wide range and I think what you're saying is saying, if you want me, I can try to narrow that down for us to discuss.
Yeah, and I think, I think initially, you know, when we talked about putting this group together, I don't think the mission of the group was to say how you're going to spend it. I mean, that, I think the council, the elected body is going to have to determine what that funding mechanism is. We were just trying to get the group to say.
Yeah, and that's. Give us a shell, give us a skeleton and we'll fill in the bones.
Yeah.
My question is, what kind of information do we need before we go to the legislature? I mean, what kind of answers do we need to have before we can have you prepare that document?
What, what we'll do, we're going to have some decision points on, you know, as far as how we, what we're trying to achieve and how we deal with the distribution, okay? So kind of from our level, the way I've got this envisioned, and Adam can give this an amen or not, but, you know, what I kind of envision is that we're going to have to have our discussions about, okay, well, you know, from this distribution, you know, perhaps we want to, you know, use this amount for infrastructure, things like roads or whatever, or we're going, you know, spend X amount of corpus or not, or, you know, those kinds of things. Once we do that and we decide, okay, here's what we're trying to achieve and here's how we want to achieve it to, to, you know, relative to the dollars, then it's going to go to the attorneys who will draft up copies, basically drafts of.
So does it have to be that specific?
To a certain extent, yes. I mean, Rick did a really good job of summarizing, like broadly, like everything that's, that you've discussed is on the table as a possibility. But, but there are different legal considerations to take into account depending on what you want to do. And something that may help you achieve something you want to do under state law might create another difficulty with the Internal Revenue Code and it's about really structuring the, or creating the final structure or structures. As, as Mr. LaLance said, you know, it could be a trust, it could be a foundation, it could be a combination of the two. Depends on what you want to do with the money. And until that question is answered, we're kind of, just kind of spitballing in terms of what, what might work, but it might not work best for what you want to do.
Well, Bill, I think that what we're going to be sending to the legislature is not necessarily all of the detailed mechanisms on what we're going to do. I think what we were, the idea initially was that the best way to protect the corpus of the investment, so say that the council, I think we all agree that we don't want a future council to be able to come in and say, hey, we're going to spend $100 million on whatever. But we were going to write that to change our charter to basically say, future councils, here's what the intent of the council was back in 2021. And if you're ever going to change that, you got to go to the legislature to get them to, to change that charter. You know, that may not be that we, you know, some council may say, hey, I want to spend X number of dollars more to whatever else, but that's where the council's going to have to have that discussion.
Right. I think in, in that conversation, what will probably, though, you know, what will probably be important is that we are able to say, you know, we're going to create a foundation to do XYZ, we're going to create a trust to do ABC, you know, in something that we send to the legislature to try to go ahead and approve for us, right, to change the charter. It's going to, there's going to have to be some level of, of detail to it. Now, it's not going to necessarily have to be every little detailed percentage point that whatever, you know, I mean, but I suspect, and, and part of that was because there are legal ramifications and tax ramifications. The attorneys were very careful to make a lot of references to, you know, well, you don't want to mess up your tax status if you do this, this way you get a tax status, or if you do it this way, you could have this as separate tax status. So, you know, there are those kinds of issues that we're going to have to work through too. But here's kind of where I came to, and the reason I oversimplified that, that summary is because basically it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg spot also. Kind of like what Darren, I think, was talking about earlier is, you know, we could have the attorney sit up there and talk ad nauseam about foundation law, right? And then all of a sudden, we say, well, we want to do this and he goes, oh, well, that's a trust, you know? And so we're, we're to a point where we kind of need to be telling the attorney, hey, this is what we're trying to achieve. And then Adam, go work with that attorney or other attorneys, whoever are the best ones that we can find to do this. I mean, I, I'm, I will say that, you know, for what it's worth, you know, we're, that would be something, I think, you know, all these Ts are going to need to be crossed and Is dotted to make sure that these things are solid as they can be, right? And that's why we're going to have, you know, hire these attorneys that specialize in it. And those guys seem really sharp. I mean, they were, you know, seemed to have experience in these types of things, not, maybe not this specific cell of a utility exactly or whatever, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's having money and putting it somewhere to achieve a purpose, so.
I mean, I hate to put more work on you, but if you feel comfortable, I mean, if everyone's okay, this would be a great workshop item that we have something come to us that you work on and then that gives us a discussion point. Because right now, I don't think we would, even if we sat up here and tried to do something, I don't think we'd have a framework to be able to do anything. And if you, if you're okay with that.
Just some major decision points of we got to go left or right on this issue and where do you go?
Yeah, and, and I don't know, I, so if you get, so there's a couple of ways we could go on this and I'll just ask you guys to give me some direction on this. But like, you know, one of the ways would be, you know, and again, this is kind of one of those funny feel, I feel like, you know, I'm a staff member trying, you know, putting something together as far as like a draft. And I know those, those tend to get really dangerous. You know, you put a draft proposal of something out there. I mean, I'll recall one that we did a, kind of the, the draft run of the police training headquarters, you know? First time we saw it, there was 300 people also there, you know, I was like, whoa! So, you know, I know those things are, once something gets out there on paper, that it becomes almost like that's it. I mean, that's not how I would view it. I would view it as just very much a draft proposal to say, well, what about this? And at least that would contain the decision points, you know, because there's something saying, well, what if we did X percentage here? And it's not necessarily because I know what percent's right, it's just because I know that would be. just because I know that would be a decision point that then we could talk about. Or I could just try to identify all the decision points that I think I see that exist and we could talk about those separately and just kind of, I, I, so I'm, I'll do either way.
I mean, it seems like it would be just as easy to come up with a draft.
Yeah.
Then we all could say.
Then we could tweak it.
We need to tweak it from there.
Yeah.
I mean, we could call it, you know, like y'all did during budget, we could call it, you know, the LaLance draft.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Are y'all okay with that?
Yeah, and I think as long as we've been talking about this, I mean, I think anybody paying attention is going to know. I mean, there's been a lot of time spent trying to figure out the right thing to do. So it's not as if we're trying to, or you're trying to come up with the final draft and the first version.
Yeah.
We've done this over and over. So, I mean, I think as long as we say that, do the best you can and let's figure it out from there.
Yeah, and like I said, I think if I, if, if I build it out like that, it will naturally bring out the decision points.
Right.
Right? I mean, you know, it'll say, oh, yeah, no way, we're not putting that there. Well, that at least opened the door for us to discuss it, you know, to make the decision on it as a council.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get moving on this pretty quick, you guys, if y'all are good with it and, and just depending on.
We're paying you too much.
Yeah. I'm just tired of losing sleep over it, so as soon as I get it done.
Off your plate.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
It's a LaLance bill, right?
That's right. The LaLance plan.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Any other business from staff?
No, next week we'll have workshop, so Rick can present his.
Seven days? Six days?
And, and then we'll meet on the 29th. We have public hearings on the 29th at the end of the month.
So workshop is Wednesday, the?
14th.
14th.
14th, okay.
So, one thing, I'll just kind of, wait a second, y'all putting stuff on your calendar? Make sure I got that on the right date. Wednesday, the 14th?
Yep.
Yeah, good, okay.
Okay. I'm going to ask to do something a little different tonight. Melissa, since this is your last meeting, we are going to take roll to adjourn the meeting and that can be your, your last roll call here, July 8th, 2021.
That's nice.
We are, we are so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
And want you to know how much you're going to be missed. So.
It's my hometown. I'm not going anywhere.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Thank you and I.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
We love you.
Thank you.
We should.
Thank you.
Aye. Thank you, Melissa.
You've been awesome, Melissa.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Man.
All right.
Solid.
We stand adjourned.